Anthony Union High School District, number 14 Board of Directors meeting is today's Wednesday, September 18. I'm going to take a moment and go around the room and have everyone identify themselves so that Richard has an easier time with this minutes. I'm Stephanie Mulligan. So do you Glenn?
I'm Tharver Woodford.
Seth Wallace, North Huntington.
Katie Aiken, Bennington.
Kristen Alstead, Bennington.
Scott McInnes, Shatsbury.
Jim Pelfkin, SBSU Superintendent.
Tim Payne, MAU Principal.
Chris Quire, Martin Luther Middle School Principal.
Don Campbell, Monmouth High School Associate Director of Students' Curses.
Bjorn Johnson.
Amy Fredrickson, Bennington.
Chloe Moore, MAU Student.
I'm a two MAU student, high school board representative.
The first item on the agenda today is a presentation by the principals.
Laura do this, you know, you drive, I, you know, they're a little smoother. Mr. Payne and I got work on our.
Thank you so much. It's kind of.
All right, so we're just gonna back up one. All right. All right, good evening, everybody. We're gonna be talking about, I know that this is, you know, something that was requested by the MAU Board. We talked at our last meeting that Mr. Payne and I would be prepared to give a presentation tonight about the personal technology policy. And also implementation of what this looks like in the MAU schools, middle school and high school. We've been working together as an MAU administrative team. And I'm proud to say that we're really, you know, kind of joining forces and really working together to deliver consistency to the students as they work up through the middle school and high school. So instead of going through and just reading these stats here, I'm gonna pause for a moment. I'm gonna ask that you just read the statistics that I'm putting up on the screen in the first slide, okay? And this is, these are statistics that were pulled out of a report that the US Surgeon General wrote and put out in this past May. I'm gonna give you a moment, then I'll talk about that. So as you finish up looking through those statistics, I highlight this. You know, this is connected to cell phones, this is connected to social media use, which obviously is a major, you know, a major connection to cell phones, a major use of cell phones with our students. You know, I just wanna highlight a couple of things in there. So there's connections that the Surgeon General is drawing to body dissatisfaction, to students reporting through the country. I want to, I should point out, probably obvious, but I want to make clear that, you know, these are national statistics. These are not specific to Vermont. They're nationally based statistics. I will get into some statistics in a few more slides specifically for Vermont State and the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So I'll get there in a moment. But, you know, students reporting through the country that they feel addicted to social media and cell phones, and it would be hard to put them down and give it up. A high percentage of students are reporting that that social media makes them, you know, feel bad about themselves or worse about themselves. And then, one of the pieces that I wanted to really highlight is the 64% of adolescents that are often or sometimes reporting that they're exposed to hate-based content through social media. This is where a lot of the bullying and harassment concerns come in. And I will get into that a little bit more, a little later in the presentation. All right, so these are some things that SBSU educators are seeing, SBSU administrators are seeing. But it's not isolated to SBSU administrators and teachers and staff, okay? This article that's connected in this presentation, and I do think that we can share this presentation afterwards for people that have got the, you know, super kind of help team. But there's links to articles in here that you might want to dig into a little deeper, which I certainly we have done. But these are things that are being seen across the country. And this particular article references, I think it's four different schools. Some of them are pretty local. One of them is Pittsfield, Mass. Actually, and some of them are, you know, I think there's one referencing like in Washington. So there's an array of different, you know, different school districts, but, you know, constantly checking phones for messages, watching videos and showing them to fellow students. These are things that educators are seeing in schools, okay? Playing games, video chatting with students in other classrooms, or sometimes students that are not in, you know, students in school and they're chatting with a student that's not in school, maybe homesick or maybe truant. Video keeping students and teachers, getting into peer conflicts through texting and social media. So again, I just wanna just highlight that these are not, this is not something that is isolated to SBSU or MAU schools. And again, you know, some statistics that I felt personally were really eye-opening. You know, obviously, there's a vast range of, you know, students and how much they use their cell phones. Some of them, I only check messages a few times a day, recognize that. And there's some statistics about students that, you know, are struggling to keep it out of their hands. So checking notifications as many as 498 times in 24 hours. Usage ranges from a few minutes to 16 hours daily. And this is again according to a study, and I have linked the article that everything is pulled from here. But what it all boils down to in a typical day, an average teen receives 237 notifications in a day, which is kinda wild to think about. And 25% of them are shown to be during school hours and 5% at night. And again, I'm making that connection that first slide to, you know, correlations around, you know, sleep impacts, which has a direct impact on learning in the schools as well. The last thing says, you know, the median amount of phone use during school is 43 minutes. I'm gonna be honest, when I first saw that, I was like, okay, 43 minutes, is that, you know, is that a huge number or not? When you, when you, I'll say it like this, when you break that down, that's, at the middle school, that's a block. That's a block of school. That's a science class. That's a math class. It's an English class, whatever, you know, whatever it may be. And that's a median number. So, you know, I think that that does, and I slide. The point is that that adds up to a lot of lost instructional time. This is what I feel is the most important slide in the presentation here. And this is where we boil it down to Vermont-specific data, okay? So this is from the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. It's given every few years. This is from '21, the most recent data that we have back from the YRBS. The state average, this is around electronic bullying, okay? And which is, you know, an issue that we've talked about at past meetings. It's certainly something that we, is on the forefront of our mind, in the forefront of our, you know, our work day, every day. Making sure that these situations of bullying and harassment are, you know, followed upon, investigated, and there's action taken. So the state average, based on the YRBS, is 17% of students reporting that they've been electronically, you know, bullied or harassed. SBSU average is 25%. And then we've broken down the grade levels for the MAU schools. And I'll, you know, I'll be the first to say, if you look at the grade levels in my building, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, that is very concerning to me. And that is far exceeding the state average and also the SBSU average and Mr. Payne's building. You know, I like to think a little maturity is setting in by 12th grade year. You know, you see the numbers dipping a little bit there, but you still see numbers that are, you know, at or are quite significantly above the state average for students that are reporting that they're experiencing this. And again, you know, we feel like we, you know, we need to intervene and we need to help make sure that this is not occurring in our schools.
Just to add to Chris's slide there, you know, so if the mission of MAU is to provide a safe educational environment for kids, the time spent by adults who support kids on this kind of behavior is a lot. So at the high school, we got less than a week into the building and I started receiving emails from students over the weekend saying, hey, the TikTok accounts are back up. There's a recurring account. I'm not gonna share it publicly because I don't need kids checking it out. But where you can anonymously go and post just horrendous things about classmates. As somewhat of an urban legend, we encourage kids and we report, TikTok takes them down, but you know what that's like. It's just whack a mole. It pops back up. Kids go back in, they say terrible anonymous things. And you can post anonymously. The moderators will post for you. You don't have to have any identification. And that impacts the school day. We spend, we spend hours of the day tracking behavior that happened over the weekend in a quiet space off-campus because it impacts kids' ability to come to school. So it has a real effect, not only in kids feeling safe, but what do you want educators spending their day doing? Tracking TikTok or teaching algebra, so. Sorry.
All right, good. I think you're up.
So this is just for everybody in the room. This is the language as proposed per the policy, 5048, personal use of wireless communication. In quotes, it says, "In an effort to establish more positive school culture, personal technology will not be allowed during designated school hours." This was updated per the boards during the 23-24 school year, this past school year. Adoption is dated there, March 24th. And you, the boards then directed a committee, mostly of building administrators, to get together and draft administrative regulations, which are the day-to-day operations, okay? If we're saying that personal technology will not be allowed during the school hours, how will we go about implementing that? So. So I brought a show and tell. Happy to pass the votes. This, and I want a little bit of backstory. We, at the high school and at the middle school, we get emails every day from companies telling you, this is gonna cure your cellphone problems, all the time. And most of those go right into the recycling bin. We don't even give them a look. Yonder is the one that if you go and Google, it's the resource available in the United States. Their background, some of you may have used this product before. If you went to a concert, there are an increasing number of artists who require this to come and watch them because they don't want you creating content while watching them perform. And so in order to enter the venue, they issue you a pouch. You put all of your electronic devices in it, your cellphone, your AirPods, your smartphone, anything that could create content goes into it. Lock it. The selling point for this product, of course, is that the individual carries this with them all day. You're not responsible for storing 850 of them. I don't think any of us want to get into that business anyways. Most of the kids have a much better phone than I personally carry, so. So I'll stand up, but the classroom teacher in me just can't resist. But, so, and Chris and I should talk, oh geez, mine, that's, it'll fit in. I don't know. So, of course, I teased the kids. I have the oldest phone in the building. It's probably like an iPhone 3 or something like that.
So we might.
Yeah, so, so basically, at the high school, and Chris can talk a little bit about how this is gonna be different. We are gonna issue one of these to every student in the building. It's not Kevlar. It's not indestructible. It's neoprene. The button is Yonder's, you know, proprietary technology. The idea is that everything goes in and we, we actually, Chris and I, we listened to the sales pitch last year. We tested this out at summer school. We thought, yeah, we'll see. We'll see if kids. And generally, and it's a much smaller sample size. You're talking maybe 150 kids. But generally, kids are all right with it. I recognize that summer school is three hours a day as opposed to a six-hour day. Some observations, kids were like, wow, I really use my phone a lot, you know, like, I can't believe I didn't reach for it the last, you know, three hours or something like that. The other thing we noticed is bathroom traffic slowed down a lot. So I don't know how the cellphone is connected to your, you know, your trips to the bathroom, but it really slowed the congregations and book clubs that formed in the bathroom. So the device, the idea at the high school, Chris can talk a little bit about it, is the idea is that students carry the bag. Yonder encourages students to decorate. I am having my Flex Groove. They're gonna create some art for mine. I will be carrying one as well as many of the adults in the building. But you come in, you would show staff that your device is in there. You would lock it and you're good to go. These are Yonder proprietary magnets. They can be mounted on walls. The question I've gotten from several parents already is, hey, is everybody gonna be able to get out of the building quickly? You can. There are portable ones. There's also wall-mounted ones. I will warn kids who are watching, if they're watching this. Amazon is filled with magnets that they swear will open a Yonder bag. I would really encourage kids to read the reviews. It's almost all the reviews say they're garbage, they don't work. And you just spent 20 bucks on a magnet that is not gonna match. When you leave campus, you're free to go. Whatever in the, you know, in the bag you put there this morning, so we don't need to check that or anything like that. Summer school, we did not send the bags home. We didn't have enough to do that, and so we were issuing them each day. What our plan at the high school is that this would be yours. Students would be expected to bring it in. Cellphone goes in the bag, closes up. You carry it when you leave. We do have students also who leave during the day to do community service, attend CCB courses. They would be able to access the magnet on the way out of campus. They could undo the bag. They have their bag, their phone with them as they travel in the community. When they come back in, the expectation is they would seal the bag and they would be good to go. Wanna go to the next slide for just a.
Yeah, I'll just say, because we're about to, just to clarify what Mr. Payne was referencing for the middle school. The only difference at the middle school is at this moment in time, we've decided that we're not going to send the bags home with students. And so, you know, for obvious reasons, I think, we're just worried about them coming back consistently. Yeah, I'll leave it at that. So what we're gonna be doing is we're gonna have bins located at our entrances. We are also going to have the wall-mount devices, which as Mr. Payne showed us, you can unscrew the magnet from so that way you can take that off the wall during the day, so students can access a locking device during the day. And then when students come in, they're gonna grab a bag, their device is in there, they're gonna go on with their day. And then at the end of the day, they're gonna come out, the exits, the three exits that we have designated for entry and exiting the building. They're gonna unlock their device. They're gonna put their bag in the bin so they can get another bag the next day. So the difference being that we're not planning to track the bags. At this moment in time, we're not trying to connect the bag with a student and track the bag. We're gonna be monitoring, staff's gonna be monitoring exits, making sure there's no significant damage to the bags as students are unlocking and bringing them to the bins. So that's the only difference, I think, really with the building-level procedures that we've been talking about, middle school versus high school.
You know, the Yonder rep would love to send you a bag for every kid. I recognize that. But at the high school level, they think it's important that students have ownership of it. And there are schools that encourage their kids to decorate them, you know, personalize them. It's mine. I'm responsible for it. I know who handles this. I know what goes into it. And the hope is that kids are more responsible for it. I do recognize that there will be kids who come to school and say, oops, I forgot it. Oops, I lost it. We can talk a little bit about that. So they are, at the high school, we're gonna expect students to utilize it daily. All personal devices will go into that. So it's a phone, it's a smartwatch, it's an Air Bud. The bag locks. I will, I'll answer this question right now. I have a couple of students. I have students at the high school who use a cellphone to monitor health and medical issues. And so we would be working through 504 IEP to address that. And there are, there's an alternative bag that doesn't require a lock on it for those students. They can access the device during the school day so they can continue to monitor health, safety, things like that. But that would be by a plan only. That wouldn't be a kid coming in that says, I will, I will faint if I don't have my phone all day. Now, that's not, that wouldn't be the discussion we're having.
We're in the same boat. We're getting some of the Velcro bags as well for those same reasons for some students that we've identified that have that need.
So we have offered this presentation at the ninth grade orientation at the high school. Chris has shared this just this past week at the middle school.
Last Thursday at the open house, still about 200, 200, you know, family members.
We have, we've had class meetings, ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th grade. We've shared this with them as well. There's open house for the high school next week. My intention is to share this again with folks. The bags, if students misplace them, damage them, break them, it's a $30 repair. I hope is that will help students say, look, I've got to take care of this. It's money. If students can't produce a bag, have a device, there will be a phone caddy in my office where phones can sit for the day. They can collect them at the end of the day, but we're not gonna, yeah, we're not gonna, you know, oh, I forgot it at home. That'll allow students to continue to walk around. We'll store it someplace and they, we'll store it in my office. They'll get it back at the end of the day. We have a card system so they get the right smartphone back and all that good stuff.
We have ordered some extra bags too, just to have, you know, to have a little bit more on-site.
Yep. And for purposes, just to be clear, Arlington Middle and High School has placed an order for the bags. MAU High School and MAU Middle School. So there's three campuses, well, four campuses. All right. Yep. We shared this with students, you know, what happens if, what if happens if a student has, is found with a phone in the building? I should take one step back. The phone is a constant source of tension between teachers and students. Phone away. Please put the phone away. I told you twice, put the phone away. I'm not putting the phone. It distracts from, again, what we're hoping is the building relationships and the teaching kits. And so our hope is that by giving this bag, it gets, it takes that out of the, it takes that confrontation away from the classroom teacher and the student. Yes, an administrator might have to come and talk to you, like, I provided this with you. I gave you an opportunity. It brought, you know, you brought a burner phone in. Now I have to address that. So our, this is what, this is administration regs, so this is what administrators are recommending to the board. First offense, so you're found with a phone in the building, administrator will ask you to hand it to them. There'll be a phone call home. We've collected the phone. At the end of the day, the phone is returned to the student. There will be a disciplinary referral placed in the computer system so that we, you know, lose track of how many times we may have addressed it. The second time, they find you in the, you know, school and you've got a personal device on you, please hand me the phone. Thank you. Phone call home. Making arrangements with the family to come and collect it at the end of the day. The third time, the third time, if we get to that, find you in the school with the phone, ask you to, you know, collect it, and then have a conversation with the family about what's a plan, because clearly this is an issue. Do we leave the phone at home? Do we meet you at the door and you hand it to an adult that you trust and we store it for you because you haven't been able to navigate this system a third time? I did talk to student classes about this. I said, look, I know this is gonna be a struggle for some folks. If you really have a passion about this, please come and talk to an administrator, lay out your case. I'm willing to listen. But if you turn this into a public display of civil disobedience, that's a different, that's a different conversation. You're disrupting the learning environment. You may be creating an unsafe environment because you're not following directions from an adult. And that would be a different discipline approach as opposed to a student said, oops, I got caught with, you know, my second phone, things like that. Yeah, so I'll stop right there as far as.
Yeah, I just wanna interject one other, one other thing. So, you know, obviously, we've been reading a lot of different, there's a lot in the news, a lot in the media about schools, you know, make, schools and school districts making this shit. And, you know, I've read a lot of different articles about schools in Connecticut and Rhode Island and just different places across the country. And one of the things that's really interesting to me is, you know, it's probably not a surprise that, you know, administrators and teachers are reporting, you know, better engagement or focus in school, less issues with the phone, obviously. But the interesting thing that I found is in those articles, they've talked to a lot of students as well. And the students in these schools over time, not day one, because, you know, change is hard. It's gonna be an adjustment. And, you know, I think that it really is, you know, it's very difficult for students and adults to, you know, to put it away, to not check the notifications. But what the students are reporting in some of these articles that I've read, that they've interviewed, you know, they're reporting more socialization. They're reporting that they are having more productive conversations with their peers. They're reporting that they're able to focus in school better and that they are more engaged in school. So I just think it's really interesting that a lot of things that I've heard are showing that students are starting to recognize over time that, you know, this is a necessary step and they're reporting positive effects. I'm optimistic that our students will have the same experience.
I will, I will close with this. I got, I've gotten emails from families in the last week. Folks know this is coming. We're looking at a rollout right around October 7th. That's when we anticipate the devices being on campus and distributed and all that and working on that. So families have a couple of concerns. Look, I use the phone. I send notifications to my kid all day. Change of plans, picking up a sibling, their practice has been canceled, different methods picking up, things like that. How do we address that? I rely on the phone. Both schools have a staff person on a phone. You can call. We'll pass a note. We have staff available to pass notes to kids. We can absolutely update folks as their plans change during the day.
We can retrieve a kid, though, to come down for a phone call if they need to have a direct conversation.
Yep, and we both have spaces where kids can have phone calls if that's what they need. The second one is probably the more concerning, especially as we've started the school year with yet another shooting at a school. And that is, parents are saying, look, I need this for when bad things happen at school. I need to know. And I tell you this respectfully. I've been in administration for 20-plus years now. Been to lots of trainings. My most recent one was with Chris and the teens, Homeland Security last year. And we had a whole day talking about what happens if someone who shouldn't be in campus is on campus.
Two days.
Two days, yeah. And it's just continuing scenarios that probably keep people like Chris and I up at night, like, how are you going to address that? We have good plans. We have good people. The trainer, all these folks are law enforcement, ex-militaries are saying that a cellphone in the hand of 850 kids is not gonna make that situation better. What is gonna happen is you're gonna have a situation where you're calling emergency services to come to campus and help you. Their primary mission will be to deal with the situation on campus. But if you have 850 kids texting messages out, you will absolutely bring the community to campus. And that will create a second issue for law enforcement and emergency to deal with, and that is secure on campus.
The reality is it's gonna impact, it's gonna impact the response in a negative way, not help anything. And students in these scenarios, you know, they're safely in a classroom, you know, waiting for directions from an administrator, from law enforcement, what's the next step to be safe? And so if they're texting out information, accurate information about, that's gonna cause panic. It's gonna cause, and I understand, I mean, I'm a parent as well. I understand wanting to make sure your student's safe. And that is absolutely, I think I can speak for myself, and I think I could speak for Mr. Payne in that, you know, when I walk into work every day, that is the thing on the forefront of my mind every single day. But that's not gonna help. It's a false sense that it will help. It's gonna impact response time for first responders. It's gonna impact us being able to give good directions to students and keep them safe.
I wholly agree with everything that you can say. Is there a method in the, you know, in program that you're gonna have to deliver this information to parents?
You mean this, what we're saying right now?
Those specific things.
Yeah, so I took questions. I took about 10 minutes of questions Thursday at open house. I did some, had one of the best open house turnouts I've had since I've been an administrator, since we did it together. I had, I would say probably over 200. I put 200 chairs out. Almost every chair was filled and there was standing, you know, there was people standing in the cab. And I took about, you know, 10 minutes of questions and I spoke about, you know, these things that we're talking about, you know, to families. So, you know, we've been talking a lot about, you know, we're doing this. We're doing the open house. We did grade level. I then did some assemblies for students. I did grade level assemblies for each student. And I'll continue to encourage people to reach out if they have additional questions. Happy to talk about that. But I think we've been pretty thoughtful about like the communication piece. We also did a letter to families that went out recently prior to the open house. So, yeah, we're trying to, you know, cover all the bases and we're available and open, you know, encourage people to reach out to us if they have questions or they wanna, you know, talk about that a little bit more deeply. The only, sorry, the only other thing I wanna say is that when we send this out to you guys, if you read through some of the articles, one of them. One of them, I would be lying if I remember exactly which one it is, but one of the article links on these few slides, um, talks about this point. And it talks about some agencies like the FBI, Homeland Security and other agencies that have this same recommendation.
Thank you for that slide.
Yes.
Do you mind taking down just in case, because I want, um, the light to just make sure we show the public, because I think they can only see our slide, I just wanna make sure we show them the, the items for them.
Yeah, so let me. So an open house next week for the high school. We've reorganized the typical open house, it's usually fifteen minutes of introduction and the blue seats and then moving around the building. And we restructured the evening, so we'll start in the auditorium, I'm gonna give the presentation again, take questions and answers for parents, we've scheduled a half an hour of time for that. Then I'll do the welcome to the building and then we'll do time to walk around and meet teachers, we think it's that important to carve up the. That's not our usual technical, we thought would be helpful for.
I just know from perspective that parents need to hear it more than once.
Yep.
And we did the same, we did a present, they did the same thing, we did a present, we carved up our house and differently, we did a presentation at the beginning. And then, you know, did about a half hour of presentation, question and answer, so then we had, you know, then do the real business of hanging out with teachers and seeing what's going on in the class.
I mean, just for the public that had, that only had the slide up, I think Tim Munis right and has.
Yep.
The, that's the magnet release and then the other is the other bag. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, you, you would add it better than me.
So I'm, I'm wondering what. You mentioned that when, how many twenty, they have to show a staff that they put it into the bag. What happens if they, so that's assuming that every kid comes in with a phone?
Uh, it's a good question, so, uh, summer school, we did ask students who said, I'm staying at home, I don't need the hassle at all.
So what happens in those cases if they come to school and say that?
And they go on, I can speak for the middle school, and if it's different at the high school, you know. I, I, you know, we did, that's therapy too, but, um, at the middle school, I, you know, I'm not, we're not like searching a student for a phone or anything like that. Right, where I don't think they're, you know, doing that at the high school either, so, you know, if they say, hey, I don't have a phone, okay, and. If it comes out during the day, that slide where we showed the administrative regulations, that's when those things go into place. When we first started talking about this, we were like, oh, well, what's the need for these admin regs if we have the bags? That's the need for the admin regs, because, you know, at some point in the day, I'm willing to bet that that phone is gonna sneak out of that pocket. Somebody's gonna see it and they're gonna know that like, hey, that's supposed to be in a yonder bag, but then we're gonna have to implement those, those regulations that we, we showed in that last slide.
Yeah, if a kid walks in the door and says, I don't bring a phone, okay. So like Chris said, what I've found is kids who are gonna try to game the system, that phone's gonna come out at some point. They, it just will. The bag, I think the bag will help some kids like, okay, I can't, I, I'm, I'm gonna use a bag, because I'm as bad as a teenager. I checked that thing fifty times a day. But if I put it in a bag, shows the kids I'm buying into it too, alright, this is important, and two. Keep me from reaching from this place, I'm gonna read right now.
How has the feedback from the students been?
Well, I can tell you this, I, I teach a class every day with less weeks and I have mostly ninth and tenth graders, they don't like it at all. We had a very pointed discussion on Monday, uh, which, which was ironic, because we, I have a couple of them who were arguing with me with a phone in their hand. Like, I can shut this off at any time. I'm like, alright, then put it in your bag, well, no, I'll miss my, you know, I'll miss the thread or I'll miss the response that like. Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I think it's, it's changed, teenagers are notorious, they don't like change, they're creatures of habit. Uh, and I do think it's, we're gonna go through a period of time where they're convinced that they are missing out on the most important things in the world.
We have a question.
Yes, can I just respond to that?
Oh, sure.
Hold up, the middle school's been a little different, um, it's been a little bit more neutral, I would say. Um, we started off the second day of school having the grade level assemblies, talking about, you know, our, our procedure right now before we put the bags into place. Uh, is often away in the locker, like throughout the day. So I feel like they already, um, are having some practice, you know, with that not being on them or not being allowed to be on them. And I, I, I'm not gonna sit here and say that, you know, I'm getting like students coming up to me like, I can't wait till, you know, October seventh, this is gonna be great. But I also, um, I'm not getting a lot of, I'm not getting a lot of negative feedback from them either. It's just, it feels a little bit more neutral with students right now. And that might change as we near, you know, near the date, I recognize that, but it, it really has not been a, a, a huge topic of debate with, with students and, and, you know, staff right now.
This is, this is definitely a big, big change within both school communities, not just for the kids, but for the parents as well. And I'm not saying that this is in any way a policy I don't agree with, because I certainly think this is a huge issue. Um, in students' education. The thing that I am a little. I don't know what the right word is, but I really think that with a change this big. To try to have this in such a little amount of time without the transparency of what's coming. Is probably also what's making the parents a little bit upset, and I guess I'm wondering too, why, why if this was, if this had been in the works. Why wasn't this sort of talked about prior to now? Why are we just now hearing this? Well, that, you're not part of the administrative regs, they are, so.
I know Leon has a question too, so do you wanna respond or?
I'd be more than answer that question.
We wanna answer the question before.
I'm just wondering what the thought process of why not bringing this?
Yeah, um, I mean, I think honestly, I think we had a packed agenda last meeting and we have talked about, we had a presentation that we wanted to give and it was a packed agenda and we didn't.
You, you started this for summer school, so you had a new.
I didn't pilot it for summer school, but I still did pilot it for summer school.
Right, so you had a new this was in the works.
I, I would, I would clarify.
Well, look, you can add to the agenda.
I would say. The policy has been in effect, it is gonna prohibit the use of cell phones for almost a year.
No, I get that. No, I understand that.
Right, so the, the boards all voted, uh.
April.
Uh, by December.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah, of twenty.
It's December and.
Right, so. I, I disagree that anyone should be shocked or surprised that, that it's coming.
No, you're, you're miss, you're mishearing what I'm saying, I'm not talking about the policy itself, I think the policy itself is really, really important. I'm talking about the regs and how it's going to be implemented, because it is such a big change. And I think on the school board, school board level, what would have been nice is. So that we can help support some of these regs that are coming with us, to have some of this information on planning sooner. So that way we're not kind of all hearing at the same time, so when community members start talking to us about it, we have the information, we know what's in the works. So having this a little bit sooner would have been helpful.
So, I, I need to clarify that then, so Chris and I saw a sales pitch in the spring. I said, well, let's try it, let's see if the device even works for this, with summer school. I had no intentions of rolling it out this year. I wanna be really clear about that, I thought I'd be coming back in the, but, because it's a thirty thousand dollar investment at the high school level. That's, that's something that I have to clear by the superintendent, I can go to him and say, I wanna practice with it, two hundred is a manageable number to purchase at thirty dollars a piece. And so we did, we tried it over the summer with the idea that it would be a twenty-five, twenty-six. If the school board and the community supported the budget. It was with the support of Central Office of Administration that said, hey, we think this is having a very positive effect, we shouldn't wait for the year, we could enact it now. And so the funding came forward to Arlington certainly wasn't looking for it, Chris and I were, like, I said, we're planning for, we're gonna have to go through the budget process. So I apologize that it feels like it was rushed, we were piloting, I think it turned out better than we thought, money was available and here we are now.
I think the fact, it was those funds that purchased it, so it wasn't the MAU funds, so. And that was expiring, had to invoice this product at the end of this month. The fact that it hasn't started yet, um, I think speaks to that, we are talking about this, we are bringing this to you and, uh, and. I mean, let's say, no start of the monumental changes like this is ever gonna be ideal, no matter how we do it, how. There's gonna be critics who feel that, uh, we shouldn't do it at all, or we don't like that we do it, or. Um, you, you know, it's just, we're not gonna please everyone. So I acknowledge that, that some board members feel that it should have been brought to you earlier, but, um. You know, and Leon can speak to how, if you want, how administrative regs work, which are not the policy, but they're derived from the policy. I don't know, when, when were the administrative regs finalized, do you know, anybody know that?
Yes.
Yeah.
If you're not allowed what you have here, um.
Let me go back and, yeah.
First of all, I just wanna thank you for working on this. And this is the second year that we've asked administrators to take a bunch of the policies during the summer break, the summertime. And thoroughly go through them in terms of the policy and marry administrative regs. This was one that was asked to be included in there for them to do this in-depth review because of the problems. That has been going on at the high school for students getting expelled and other places, because they refuse to give up their cell phones, they refuse to do this. And some of them, to be honest with you, some of the teachers say, I need help. And you get that help from the board in terms of making sure you set this policy in place so that administrative regs can be set up. So we, we started some information, but to answer the question, like, New York has put things all over the paper. Saying that we're gonna implement this thing by February. I don't know what Mass did, I do know I contacted a bunch of other schools and they said, well, we got something in place, but you don't even know about it. You know, you didn't hear about it. What's different here is that we had a massive group that just spoke of, of administrators looking at policy, uh, fifty, eighty. And making sure that the consequences we had in there, that the phone need to be concealed. During instructional time. This is an aid to help them conceal that, the policy piece. That's what that is along the line, and so, uh, and it, and, and it says, you know, if we. That otherwise, you know, in terms of doing things, if we didn't, if they didn't conceal it, then there were gonna be consequences associated with that. So that's been out there for a year and twenty twenty-three, early when we put this in place. So I wanted to make sure, I thank you for working during the summertime to help put this in place, but it's a, it's a process, a piece in works, because. There's questions that came up on our policy committee meeting, one is how long, I mean, the notification I get, what about on the buses? What about on school sponsored trips? What about, you answered the one about special needs that need to have some, our medical needs, uh, that needed to be in it. All of that needs to be documented in the regs. So we asked that you go back at the last policy committee meeting and look at all these things, take that information, add it and make sure you have it all covered. So that we can roll it out to the cat TV and the banner. And my understanding there, that TV got. That stuff on that policy committee meetings, summary that did get taped, but the parents here, we wanna get this out to all of the parents, because there is a benefit here. And we talked about hassle being with the teachers, but the grade level and the learning has also dropped. In the schools. And that is a real concern, and it should be a concern of this, this board. That, that the education committee should be looking into, why are we getting dropped percentages along that one? The state has it, that information available about this, so you wanna do it. This policy is still gonna be addressed again at the annual conference. At, by, on, uh, my school board association. I think it's also something that the legislators were supposed to be looking at as well for that, so it's a big thing. But an hour of student instructional time waste is too much. And we ought to be applauding them for, let's get this in as quick as possible and we'll deal with the facts that, hey. This is as quick as we can get it into place, because your son or daughter or whoever mine is much more important than to worry about when we got it to you.
Um, I have a question.
Yeah, um, I have a question regarding the dismissal, you kind of touched on this, uh, during your presentation, but what exactly is gonna be the protocol for dismissal? Um, and how is, um, you know, students like walking their phones in front of administration can be applicable to, um. Early dismissal and late entry?
Sure, so students, uh, enter right now, uh, through cafeteria and the courtyard, that's it. So there would be, we have staff available in the morning to check in, hey, how you doing, make sure the pouch is, you know, this is my pouch, I'm good, walking in. Uh, I think the concern that I've heard from families so far is, hey, end of day, when it's a hustle, you know, the buses leave. That's two parts, one, talking to do for, like, hey, first couple of weeks, let's cut everybody a couple of minutes slack, so we're not leaving kids on the curb because it took a while. The other thing is we're gonna have multiple stations, they're mobile, and we'll be mounted on a wall, it'll be at a turnstile type thing, and it'll be like traveling and subway you go by. Um, you don't have to physically whack it, you can just lay it on top, it touches the button, it opens, you're ready to go for the day. And so we, we used it, like I said, a smaller group, but we had a smaller number of magnets and we cleared the hallways pretty quickly at the end of the day. If you have a, uh, late entry or an early dismissal, many seniors do, uh, you would be checking into the main office anyways, because you have to sign in that you're there. Uh, staff would be available, hey, the yonder pouch is great, or if you're leaving early, magnet will be available to you, so you can go as well. Uh, and like I said, students who do community-based learning or you have CCB courses, you're traveling off campus, that magnet would always be fun. Centering at the checkout at the front desk, which you would be signing out anyways as you leave campus to go to those, um, activities.
There's a number of, of those magnets, there's, we're getting it through the, the three schools and, and there's, um, there's some portable magnets that looks just like that, but they're slightly different, there's like a little handle on it. And so we can, you know, like Mr. Fain said, we can place one of those at, you know, each office in the middle school or the, the main office of the high school, or, you know, administrators can have them and, you know. We can even see where the bottleneck is happening at the end of the day, and we can like go out to those areas and have multiple of those, the portable ones, that we can, you know, kinda try to. Help move that along a little bit, so. It is the dismissal and entry procedures, I think, are definitely, I don't, I don't wanna lie about it, like, I think that they're gonna take a little bit of time, just like any. Just like the first day of school, but, you know, always takes a little bit of time at the middle school, like, it's gonna take a little adjustment, uh, for us to smooth it out. And, and we're, we're prepared for that, like, at the middle school, we're even gonna stagger our dismissal, uh, a little bit for the first, you know, week, we might just. Start our dismissal a few minutes earlier, just to, you know, make sure that everyone has time to, to get used to it.
Yeah, I just, um, I have taken a cou- couple of notes here, because I wanna make sure I touch on everything. I'm trying to figure out the best order to put it in, um, you know, when it comes to. The board's main, the board's main goal should be in is, this is coming from the state, but to help ensure that we provide equal education to all students, I think. Um, removing a device is a great equalizer, um, and to me it goes directly toward, um, helping ensure the students have. A distract, distraction-free day, I mean, we're, I did rough math, we're looking at a little less than ten percent of a student's day. If you follow those numbers, they're looking at their phone, um, their school day, which is, um, tremendous to me. Um, from a safety perspective, this has been a hot topic in our, in our house, as word has gotten out. And we're trying to do our research and provide, um, constructive conversations, because, um, I'm not sure there's rational thought coming from the other directions, so we're doing our best. But from a safety perspect, and, and in doing that research, from a safety perspective, to just partner or, um, piggyback on what has been said. One of the last things that you want is a student being on their, in a, in a time of an emergency, a student being on their phone or, or distracted, you want them to be listening to announcements or listening to their teachers. Instructor's voices saying, this is what you need to do, um, so just another layer to what was, what was already said. The other thing that really stuck with me, um, I can't remember whether it was an article I read or, um, an administrator or teacher who, who said it, but. Um, in this day and age where you have these things, students can be getting bullied in a classroom ten feet away from an instructor. And that's really from their teacher or from a, from an adult, and that's really, um, that, that stuck with me, and, and that. And and that adult doesn't have any idea that it's going on. Um, and so that really stuck with me and that, you know, if you can remove that, you're you're removing it at least for the day and giving the student a safe place to to come in and get their education, which again is an overarching board goal. Teacher retention is a huge one, and it's one of the things that I hear most consistently from, um, people in the community of why did this person leave? Why did that person leave? What's going on there? Um, one of the things that is most loud about why teachers are leaving is they're done dealing with cell phones and asking kids to put them away. They're like, I don't have to do this. I can go get another job. I don't have to argue with a kid about their phone anymore. And if this is a, if providing that education is is a way for a, or that's a tool that helped keep great teachers in the buildings to provide the education that we're setting out to do, then I'm all for it. And I think, lastly, um, I just want to thank you, the administration, for being being bold. Um, I and and taking this step. I know it's not an easy one. I know you're getting heat. Um, I know that we board members are getting heat. I think there's a petition out there and the person at the top of the list to reach out to is me. And that's fine. I have broad, I'm not looking for new friends and I have broad shoulders. Um, so I'll, I can take it. Um, and but thank you for being bold. Thank you for thinking about this. Thank you for for protecting, um, the kids' need to learn. And, um, you know, from a board function perspective, that's what we're here to do. I I don't feel, I feel especially in July of twenty-five, when we go to a governance model because that's what the state is asking us to do. We're not going to be getting into this stuff. We're going to be, how can we, how can we keep teachers? How can we provide the best opportunity for our kids? How can we provide safe spaces? We shouldn't be, we won't be getting into the meddling of specific things like this. That's why we hire good people. So, thank you.
Um, I was wondering what your policy was going to be on like students' personal computers or iPads or devices you have spread around.
So, uh, two things. The district of the MAU, we were scheduled to have a whole new shipment of Chromebooks, one to one for students, everybody getting a Chromebook. Feedback I got from students and from staff is high schoolers don't want to be responsible for carrying around a school-issued Chromebook or, you know, responsible for, you remember middle school, you carry it around in a bag and, you know, you're on charge and all that. And so what we did is we, in working with technology, we said, okay, well, yes, we're due for updates, but we're going to put them in carts. We're going to replace the ones that are in the cart, upgrade the cart, upgrade the Chromebook. I'm sure as you go through your day, you've got classrooms where teachers have Chromebooks available for you. Um, I am aware that there are students who need to have their personal devices. Uh, I'm aware that they're Google-enabled and they could communicate. They can search the internet, things like that. Uh, I would probably treat it similar to a request to not have a locking bag, but to have a Velcro, I'd probably go back and ask, why do you need your own personal device if we provide you with a Chromebook in every classroom that you visit throughout the school day? What's the need for that?
I like personally, I do all my schoolwork on my own computer. Um, parents buy their kids' devices, students buy their own devices. So, I mean, I know, I get what you're saying, that the school provides it. Like, there's no reason that I couldn't do my work on a school device. But, I mean, it's, could there be like a system where, you know, if we're caught texting or whatever on it, it's taken away? But, I don't know.
It's a really good question. Honestly, I haven't thought about students' personal laptops and iPads. Um, I'm happy to revisit that. We've gotten a couple of suggestions for regulations. I do have students who have Apple-enabled devices because they need certain apps in classes and things like that for, you know, assistance. Um, so I mean, we can revisit that. And it it's another one of those things. You just spend your day patrolling that. And you you guys know, you know, the social media, you can post through a Google Classroom, you can use that. Uh, we've had kids bully through that. We've had kids, um, use apps on the internet. So, yeah, I guess I I hadn't really anticipated, I hadn't rolled personal laptops into, you know, this device. It's the next thing we can do.
Just wondering when you're when you're thinking about this, though. I I would ask you to consider the fact that with the school-issue device, we can use GoGuardian. And so if there's someone who's opening up, um, a Google Doc and then inviting another peer to see that Google Doc and maybe sharing, um, the not so nice thing I'm saying about my peer Chris McGuire. As a teacher, I have GoGuardian to pay for, which I can then see and go and talk to Dawn about what she has on her device because it's an issued school device. So if it's an issued school device, teachers have the ability to use GoGuardian to kind of have a help too, so that they can get back to teaching.
Are there any other questions? I know that we've already houred. It's an important topic, so I want to make sure we cover it, but we have public comments next.
I shall answer. Thank you very quickly. Uh, and and also I was at freshman orientation, so that heads up a few weeks before for now. So I've done my own research and there was a great segment on Vermont Public last night about schools in Vermont implementing similar, um, similar policies. So of course you did a great job of pointing out how this is, you know, a nationwide effort. But effort, uh, Duxbury Schools are already implementing the underbags. Um, and there will be a bill introduced, uh, next legislative session around bell-to-bell policies. So I'm glad that we're ahead of the curve. Um, and I think I just, uh, there are a lot of like supplemental pieces, you know, to to what you said that are Vermont-specific. But I think as a parent, uh, one of the things that stood out to me in that that BPR segment was around the contact with parents, between parents and students, right? Um, and that there is, it was framed as, you know, parents can be a big problem. I have a night crater, so I'm there. Uh, and it stood out when I was listening this morning that that they said, you know, uh, when you have a device available and you're struggling during the day with maybe a peer situation or you're struggling in a class, it's very easy to text mom or dad or text someone else. And that's like your coping mechanism. And by allowing that, we're we're depriving kids of developing problem-solving skills and having to, you know, or or maybe it's just I I want to escape from the situation so I'm going to bury my my face in my phone, watch a YouTube video or something like that and kind of disassociate. Uh, and we're not allowing kids to develop those natural coping mechanisms. That's something that really stood out to me. Thank you.
Thank you for putting effort in. I, in fact, we're doing it amongst my children's this night. Uh, fourteen states have already either banned or restricted cellphone use by law policy. So I think Vermont's next. Uh, speaking of Scott's, um, safety comments, I have a good friend who, uh, lives within an hour of here whose child has been, is in the second year of using these bags. They had two days of active lockdowns because of, um, issues. One of the lockdowns occurred after school hours and my child was, my child was getting texts from her child who was underneath the wedges. And that kind of engagement, I'm sure, was not the most productive activity, like when they had their cellphone versus what during the school day. When during the school day, they were getting communicated through, you know, the proper school channels from, uh, people who had the knowledge. And, you know, when they were locked down with their phones, it was, they were not productive. It was not as productive. So I just, um, and that happened very, very recently. So, um, at this point, unless there's any other comments, Jim, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to move on to, uh, public comments. Uh, I don't, I'm not sure how many people we have for public comments, but for the purpose of this, I'd like to limit, uh, public comments to two minutes per person and no more than thirty minutes for this session.
Yeah, no one here electronically from the public?
Okay.
On that topic, I didn't remember a two-minute policy. Is that something we've had? And if we do, I don't think it's a good policy.
In terms of the public comment?
Yeah.
So has the board, it's my understanding that the board chair has the right to limit the amount of time, um, for public comment. That was my, like, the guidance I received today.
Well, it was explained to us by our attorney, because we did, she gives us an attorney, um, for other reasons, to, this has come up at other at other times. Uh, this is a meeting of the board in public. This is not a public meeting. It's a little chain nuance, right? So there has to be time to conduct the business that the board has on their agenda. But that gives the chair to limit the amount of time that is for public comment. For example, say, we're not going to take any more than thirty minutes of public comment and because we have multiple speakers here tonight, uh, we will limit it to two minutes per speaker. And, um, obviously, there there isn't a need to do that tonight, but, uh, the chair can do that.
I mean, I mean, speaking for myself, like I have, you know, I was, I was not sure what level of, um, and I want to make sure that everybody in the community who does show up to her public comment does have the ability to have, to be heard and not have the first person at the floor the entire time. So that is also, you know, part of it.
But remember when the bus driver came in? And by the way, I'm eager to hear what the the results on that is. But they went more than two minutes and.
So at that point, I hadn't spoken, I hadn't, I hadn't put those parameters on that in that engagement with with the Spennelli, you know, I mean, I think you're probably noting more my more recent, like, the last month meetings. You know, there are more speakers in those and I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity in public comment to talk and we also have the ability to do what we came to.
Great.
And so there's no one on?
No, no one has.
Okay. So we will move on to finance. Um, uh, the treasurer's report is to be posted. It is not, uh, last time I checked, it is not in the documents yet. Uh, the next item on the list is the closure of Butch Corbett Scholarship with an action. Let me introduce you. I can, I know.
Yeah, I know you checked the next.
So it's my understanding that, um, there, we had a request that a scholarship, the, um, Butch Corbett Scholarship be closed, um, and the funds distributed back to, uh, their, um, family. Um, and the requesting an action, it takes an action of the board in order for the finance department to issue that check or the treasurer to issue that check.
So weird.
Okay, so we have, so moved by Scott and seconded by Leon. Um, any discussion? Thank you.
What would this, why?
Um, I I believe in this case, there were just, there's other family, they might have determined that there were other family needs that were pressing and.
To indirect funds in a different direction, which is their trust.
Yeah. So it's a family request?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think any funds were ever dispersed yet.
All in favor?
Hi.
I was. Um, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have minutes, warrants, retirements, leaves of absence, resignations, nominations. There's also field trips, which are on the, which is noted on the second consent agenda page, but I'm not on the first, so I just, I note that, um, I have a motion to approve them.
I'll.
Field trips, there's a field trip, uh, in Germany.
It's on, it's, it's shown on the second page, the consent agenda that's behind.
June twenty-third to July ninth of twenty twenty-five.
That did, I saw that.
Right on. Yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that was the month.
Yeah, it was the month of the, we received it after the agenda went out. We can bring it up rather than delay it to your October meeting so they can get planned out.
Um, the document is on the drive and I checked it today. It is on the drive. I don't have a copy. Um, I mean, I don't have a physical copy to show you, Liam, but I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as. Scott seconded by one, um, any discussion? I'll give me, I'll give you a second to look at it.
Okay, this, this, I won't.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If she cares. Uh, superintendent.
Good evening. Um, this evening, you're going to have an opportunity to listen to a presentation from your principals and our director of curriculum instruction assessment, Melissa Sencal. Presentation will, uh, share updated academic student data linked to the district's new continuous improvement plan goals that will be in effect from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven. And they're in, they're in alignment with SBE SU Policy six thousand curriculum. The minutes from this presentation will be shared publicly on our website after this meeting to ensure that the board and the public have an opportunity to together learn about the process, the tools and student result format and to avoid any misconceptions as a common understanding is created. Um, I'm going to ask that any board questions are held to the end of the presentation and direct them to either the board chair or myself, the superintendent. And if there are any further questions that arise after me, like you may have a thought that as you've processed what you've heard tonight, please direct them back to me and or the board chair and then we'll, you'll plan for next steps to get additional information to you. So at this time, uh, principals and our director of curriculum.
I'm the secretary, I'm director of instruction, um, curriculum and assessment. I tried to say CIA because then that gets me right in line with what it is. I have this on paper, but I can also present, are all the board members here?
There's no board member here electronically, but Richard might, oh, I think we electronically sent it.
I did send it to Richard already, so I want to be able to share this.
Cat TV won't be able to see it if you don't.
That's what I was going to say. The public looks at this through cat TV.
I will present it then, absolutely.
It's what we were, what we were getting, receiving information during, uh, uh, the principal presentation that when we're sharing the screen, people can't see the room. So in the, in the back, demonstrations going on, no one at home could have seen it.
Yep.
For people who are in the room, this is only the three pages. I'm going to talk to you about page number one. The page numbers are right on top. My page is the first page, which is all about some of the things that you're going to see. It's almost like a spoiler alert with a resource guide and definitions. A lot of things that you're going to be hearing are all about nationally norm means, which means that we have our students in comparison to representation from across the nation. Over a hundred thousand students take these tests and are calibrated continually. And I'm talking specifically about the measures of academic progress. Also talked about a lot is MAP. So if you hear me say MAP, it stands for Measures of Academic Progress. And the company is NWA. It's Northwest Educational Associates. And so we use those in grades three through ten. So at MAU, it's six through ten, three times a year. And those tests that we have are both reading and mathematics. Growth that we're talking about is a student's performance change over two moments in time. You'll, we go with the recommendation that it would be, of course, the fall and spring. And so we use those growth, and again, those growth scores are national norms. So if I have a score and I get to RIT, what RIT is? RIT is just the Math Growth Score, the Roush Unit, that's what it stands for. And it coincides to a percentage. So if I'm a ninth grader and I have a RIT score of two hundred and that's a fiftieth percentile, that's fifty percentile because that means across the nation, that's where ninth graders, fifty percent, that's an average. Bell curve, nothing wrong with that, perfectly fine. And then I would have, again, compared to my peers across the nation in ninth grade, a certain amount of points for that RIT score to grow so I can make sure I'm on, I am on track with my other peers. Now, someone who is at a fiftieth percentile has not as many points to earn as someone who maybe is still struggling. And their RIT score puts them at a twentieth percentile. They have to grow even more. And that can be hard. But I would also say, and it's like this year after year, when talking about growth scores, we've got plenty of students who are in ninety-some of the percentiles and that coincides with the RIT scores. They have to grow less points, but that can be just as hard. And again, we're asking our teachers to make sure that they're looking at all of our kids growing comparatively with everyone across the nation as they should and continue growing. The other acronym that you're going to hear is UDL. UDL stands for Universal Design for Learning. It's a teaching method that helps create inclusive learning environments for all students and it's based on brain research. Uh, the, we are in our third year of having nationally-known, uh, people in professional learning for UDL and that is called CAST. Um, I don't know why they are called the Center for Applied Special Technology and they say the concept of caste. And they say the concept of caste, make up their name. Um, but they are leading the nation in professional learning when it comes to universal design for learning. So you're going to hear some of those, I just want to put those out there, ready to have a schedule. Before I turn this over to your first principal at the middle school, Mr. McGuire, I would say that the format for this is very similar from your S, your S V S U board members who have known, known this, or if you've watched any other boards. What this is, is I show you the um, the two thousand and seven goal that these principals and their leadership teams created. And then what I've done is, so how do we do last year? How do we do, how, how reliable? How, how close are we to those goals? And so then the actual is from last year. And so you can see for the English Language Arts, what the goal is from Mount Anthony Union Middle School. And then the actual, but I really want to give my time to the principals. We also have this for math, but I want to give this time right now for really sharing of what Mr. McGuire is going to do at the middle school for reading and math.
Thanks, Melissa. So um, if you look at the very top, uh, yep, you got it right, brought this up a little bit there. Hey, go right there. Um, so this is the goal, like uh, Melissa said for, uh, you know, by the end of June twenty-seven. It's a six, we're striving for sixty percent of our students meeting their growth measure. So again, um, you know, students can make growth and not make, meet their growth measure. But we, you know, the, the test gives us a number that students should be scoring, should be receiving based on their last, their last test. And so our goal is sixty percent of students meeting that in ELA. Um, the actual uh, data from the twenty-three, twenty-four school year last year, uh, forty-two percent of our students met that growth measure. So you can just kind of see the, you know, where we are in relation to the goal, which again is twenty by twenty-twenty-seven. Okay. Um, the, we like to call these, you know, strategies or change ideas. The bullets that are underneath that are strategies to achieve literacy goals. There's four of them that I'll highlight. Um, the first one is around professional learning and getting teachers together in purple, called professional learning communities uh, to talk about instruction and, and meet student needs. There's three that I outlined specifically, uh, my leadership team, uh, which is a team of teachers that meets uh, monthly led by my literacy coach. Um, our monthly English department meetings, which again is a different group of people. Those are your first, your tier-one, uh, first instruction, English teachers. Um, the literacy leadership team, going back to that, I should say, it's, it's not just literacy teachers. It's teachers that have, uh, there's representation on the team across all content areas. And also like unified instructors, special educators, like there's representation from all over the building. And the idea is bringing literacy into all areas of, of the building. It looks different in different settings, but just bringing, how can we, you know, interject literacy throughout everything that we do at the school? Um, and then you have your literacy department, uh, that does also meet, uh, in team meetings. That's an every other day, uh, meeting, that's your literacy interventionist that get together again, led by the literacy coach. Um, the second bullet is the science of reading, of professional learning. That's something that, it's a class that is offered, that we offer to all new, uh, all new hires.
All new, and it aligns with Act one thirty-seven, which is a Vermont law that's going to go into effect next July. So it's another case where in literacy, uh, we can be proud that we're ahead of the curve of what's coming. So we can make sure we have solid readers.
Thank you. And the third bullet uh, basically talks to a focus on tier-one instruction this year. So it's a focus with our outside consultant from the Hill for Literacy. Uh, and that triples right down to my literacy coach and uh, U D L uh, coach, uh, who's newly hired. And uh, you know, just really focusing in on tier-one first instruction. And that's, you know, that's English class or content area class that all, all students receive. Um, and then the last piece is Melissa already referenced it, uh, that is our uh, U D L, Universal Design for Learning, Professional Development, that has been a three-year focus. Um, and again, I've made the decision to um, uh, to create a new position that started this year um, with the idea of making that, that work more sustainable in the building after our three-year contract with CAST is, has expired.
And the big reason that we want to bring all of this to you is that so you can see some potential budgetary impacts that are coming from the data and then the learning strategies to get there. Those potential will be coming your ways, we're going, this is exactly what we're doing.
Did we read into the math?
Please.
All right, hold it up. Um, so the math goal, uh, Melissa's got it up there, she's almost one step ahead of me, she's got it up there already. Most people are, they're usually one step there, I feel like.
That's Chris.
So uh, same number, all right, sixty percent meeting their growth measure uh, for the mathematics test. Again, that's fall to spring. Um, I'm really proud of our actual from last year. Uh, we had sixty percent growth. So it's, you know, going to be focusing, keeping that momentum going, uh, looking at the positive things that are happening uh, for math instruction in the building and keeping that momentum going so we can uh, hopefully exceed that, that measure. Um, and then I have my strategies or change ideas listed uh, below. Uh, again, it focuses a lot on professional learning. We work with a, an organization called the All Learners Network, um, which has provided some really uh, positive research-based uh, ways to teach mathematics. And that's something that all of the math teachers in the building participate in, and we've been doing that for a few years now. Um, I do want to thank uh, Rachel Kip uh, and her work as a math leader uh, at the building because she does a lot working with the district-level math coach and Melissa to kind of help coordinate that professional learning at the middle school. Um, again, uh, you know, it talks about six through twelve, uh, All Learners Network, ongoing assessments, uh, the ongoing assessment project, excuse me, and vertical teaming, trying to make sure that the curriculum is aligning through grade levels. Um, we've done again about professional learning uh, communities and specialist meetings uh, to review and analyze math data, um, and identify uh, instructional changes or needs for the first instruction in math in the building. Um, and then it goes on to say as well that not just the first instruction, but what is the, what does the intervention structure look like in the building as well? Uh, for tier-two and three. And then uh, same bullet as you'll see above for literacy, um, at the CAST organization and the Universal Design for Learning. And um, you know, what does that look like for math instruction as well as literacy and, and everything that, you know, all the subjects that we're teaching at the middle school, but specifically for math instruction for this one.
As I bring it to Mount Anthony High School, I would say the state of Vermont has encouraged us that if we're seeing data where we can boost up our numbers, like we're looking at to say, gosh, you know, you set that goal here, go even higher. They have given us a definite thumbs up that we can, you know, just keep on soaring if we meet our goals. Mr. Kane, what are your strategies?
So uh, really quickly, Chris, I'm going to watch you through the format, but you can see for the high school that fifty-three percent students meeting their ELA growth standard. Uh, in my time serving at the middle school, uh, I feel growth is the best measure of what the impact of high-quality teaching is. Uh, I don't get hung up on proficiency so much because we do recognize that we have kiddos that we're still trying to help get to the grade level. So um, we have work to do, we have fifty-three percent in ELA, uh, fifty-four percent mathematics. Um, a couple of things, a little bit of a different approach, uh, uh, as far as the high school is concerned. We too are also participating in uh, the CAST, uh, professional development. I think that has been a good thing, it's a major lift, it's three-year commitment. I appreciate the support of the central office and grant funding that made that possible. Uh, we, the next step for us is making that sustainable as the CAST steps away, it'll be on us. Uh, continue, really what Universal Design for Learning is looking at is your effectiveness as a classroom teacher, because we understand that that has the biggest impact on kids actually growing in, at, in mathematics, ELA. So that will be our next challenge, sustaining that. Um, the other piece, and it's, it seems a little bureaucratic, but a, a common curriculum map. Unlike the middle school, where it's delivered by team, uh, and it's a little smaller cohort of teachers working around eighth-grade mathematics or seventh-grade English. Uh, the high school is a slightly bigger faculty and veterans, new teachers, a common map of English nine proves to be a really useful tool. And it's a good uh, kind of coming back to, all right, what do we want kids to know in English nine? Uh, we all have the same assessment, so we can sit down and talk about what kids are learning and achieving in a class. We have the same resources, spirited conversation about text, spirited conversations about resources. I think it's been a positive thing. It also serves in addition to meeting standards for measures by the state of student growth. There's also a question we need to answer for accreditation, uh, at the high school level. Um, MEAS, which is our accreditation uh, organization, requires a curriculum map for every subject area so that it communicates to the community, what is my kid learning in English? What does my kid learn in a biology class? What is introduction to art look like? Um, so I think that's good work, I think it's been a good spark for conversations with uh, with staff. I benefit from having a building-level administrator, director of instruction, that's Kelsey Mizell. Um, it's a, extra crisp benefits from having coaches, having someone whose focus is on good teaching and student achievement is a great uh, benefit to the building. And I appreciate the support of this board making that uh, position possible. The only other thing I would add is, yes, there are still interventions at the high school level for kids who are identified as being below grade level in English and in mathematics. We have um, interventionists specifically, or we offer math labs and reading labs to give kids specific interventions with the hope that they're uh, they're achieving, with the goal of their achievement uh, is closer to grade level each year. And then the last thing, middle school is a leader in this, the All Learners Network, um, already being practiced and worked with the middle school. That is an introductory step at the high school. But I think it'll be a good conversation to have when you can point to a middle school that's already achieving its goal of sixty percent kids making the growth. The high school, wouldn't that be nice if we were in the same boat? So there's some opportunities ahead for us.
The last thing I'll share, the floor, turn it over to the chair and into um, Superintendent Colkeen, is that I want to thank Jen Austin from the middle school, Kelsey Mizell at the high school, um, who talk to me often. And one of the things that you've heard about, that we're talking about is that sustainability of, of making sure that U D L that that work continues because you have a lot of these male leaders who have done three years of professional learning and they're, they want it to continue and to grow. And you have two administrators in those buildings, so those two ladies were on board with making it and planning for that.
Okay, thank you for giving the shout-out to Mrs. Austin, I appreciate that.
I never forget them because this can't happen without all those people. I'll stop there, make some people fancy.
Are there any questions from the board? I do, um. I think I know the answer that I wanted to ask. So. Benchmarks from previous years.
Yes.
Have been something that have come up and your, your comment about you should be thinking about this from a budgeting perspective um, sticks with me because I think um, it's worth it. This, this board and our community through support, through supportive past budgets has been very supportive of the things that are, of the resources needed to help get the scores that we're seeing here. One of the things that I kind of lament is I don't believe we have benchmarks for previous years. Like what, what is the, what's the trajectory because they've changed the way.
Because.
Scoring has been done? And so. We aren't going to get next year's scores until after budgeting season.
Potentially, I, I am on almost a daily basis. Um, asking, I'll just say that her name is Danielle, and you can email her if you want, at the A R W. Um, I, I try my best to ask, when are those going to be updated? And even as of today, they were not. Um, if you want to ever go, it's on svsu.org, it's under about us and reports, the link is right there.
So we will have a, we'll have a trend, hopefully we'll have a trend line.
Again, you also hit upon something that is some, a difficult thing out of my control with longitudinal state results because they changed the test.
So I guess where I'm going is, we may not have enough data to, to know that what it, what, what the resources we've put in are working. And yet we would be asked to potentially put in more resources during budgeting time, am I?
I, he wants to jump in, I want to.
Okay. Well, let me kind of yield that for the.
I'm in teacher mode, I can't sit down and. Um, I'll let you, please, I would ask you to please um, add anything to this. But I truly think that, that we do have enough to, to do some correlation of what, what's working, and I can give an example.
Okay.
Um, everywhere where we're finding um, time, so I, I, time for A O N, All Learners Network with mathematics, with that professional learning, to get in to teachers and give them time to have the learning and the training and to do it. Um, we are seeing a correlation of growth scores. And also when you look at those math, national norm scores, we're seeing a bump up of what would be projected proficiency.
Okay.
So that is, that for me is something where I can, we can have, we have those D tops all the time to say, what can we say that is working? What are the highlights of where we're seeing the data do some growth? And growth that we need can really impact the efficacy of that. And so that's why you heard some of those things tonight. Um, but I am looking forward to the day before I retire, when we can have longitudinal results for assessment from the state results. And by not being snarky about that, I really want that. Um, and that's, that's hard to not have. I know people want it, and I want to be able to give it to you, and um, as soon as we can, I'd love, I know what you had.
Well, I, yes, this, the state test is out of date by the time it arrives. It doesn't help impact teaching because it arrives up to the start of the next year, and you're measuring last year's cohort. So they'll work that out. But MAP, which the middle school does, it's automatic, and we are getting there very quickly. That gives you growth for the individual kiddo, and you can measure that, and the results are almost instantaneous. You can measure before a course, after a course. That's the one I like because it shows growth. So even if the kid is behind where they should be, they get a gold star because you may have helped them grow more. They'll even tell you, good instruction will make them grow this much, the kid will exceed that. That's the one I want to read about all day long. The state one, as far as measuring proficiency, uh, Melissa Sencicle showed it to me in November final, read it, go from there. But you could, we could provide that as evidence of, of impact. That is very well ingrained in both.
Is there a way for the MAP data to be available then to the public?
In that way, we're, wouldn't be identifiable because we have the growth scores. So would you be looking for projected proficiency?
No, I'm just curious, like we.
Yeah.
Get these outdated data points from the S back.
I, I, I am, I'm specifically talking about MAPs, so um, we can do MAP growth scores, and because we did that for, for that, so what parts of the MAPs?
No, I just mean, is this then available on the website? You're saying that the S V S U about us, we can, the public can go and look.
Oh.
And C R S back scorers. I'm asking, can they also see the MAP scores then so that they can see real growth or actual data that's relevant?
I just want to make sure that I'm giving you what you need. So these are specific from last year.
Right, and you've given them to us, so I'm asking if it's available for the public as well.
Exactly.
So this.
The report's going to go up on our website.
This, thank you, thank you for allowing me, it was one of my things to do, so I want to thank you. This, for anybody who's listening, um, report is going to be on svsu.org, about us, reports. And at the bottom, you're going to see the other board reports that are listed there. And I'm sure Katie West will have this posted by tomorrow. I'm sorry, I wasn't following what you were saying.
If there are any other questions from board, something's important.
I just want to highlight, at the risk of setting like a broken record, because I feel like at each of our meetings, I'm talking about teacher qualifications. Um, but, but these, several of these uh, interventions or strategies kind of highlight the need and, and the importance of ongoing professional learning. That's really making such a big difference um, in the outcomes.
I agree more.
I was just quickly on Google Scholar looking for articles uh, about teacher qualifications and how they relate to student outcomes, just to have some, some backup. Um, and interestingly, in math, especially at the high school level, the math teacher's degree seems to make a bigger difference in student outcomes. So having a mathematics-specific degree in addition to. So having a mathematics-specific degree in addition to credentials. So I just want to like, I like that, you know, I've asked for an H R.
So I am going to give you that as the rest of my report. I have it.
Great, so interested to see that. I think we need to continue to support our educators because that's what.
The questions for the principals are from Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment. Then I will continue with the rest of my report. The interim Secretary of Education, Zoe Saunders, is conducting a listening tour throughout the state. And she is coming here in this room next Tuesday to meet, we're allowed six slots, and so six administrators, six administrators from E R S U are coming down. Administrators from Southwest Tech, and then bringing ten, I'm told up to ten employees from Agency of Education will be part of this listening tour that is coming down to help drive where the Agency of Education is going next. So I don't know a lot about it, but looking forward to meeting the interim secretary. Dave, you meant about bus drivers. We have been proactive in that. We hosted a meeting with the manager, general manager, my guy there of due for transportation, invited him to come in and meet with all our principals and directors and allow a conversation for what were common concerns, what they're seeing on buses. And he received feedback also from principals and, you know, it's not, the solution is not denying somebody transportation, but, you know, correcting behavior on buses. So that was, we also know that transportation is directly correlated to attendance. Also, there are certain students who may be on I O four accommodation or an I M P that require transportation or were violating their, their I M P because they can't get to school because of, they need the transportation there. So there is no simple solution, but the conversation started. I wanted due for transportation to feel that they've been heard from the administrators, that that will continue. I know you all received the letter from the governor about the spending levels and what's coming forward. We are beginning the budget process here at Central Office. I'll begin with principals meeting with the finance department to start planning their budget and just to put, we are, Dr. Finance Renee Gordon and I are talking about we're going to do some workshops for board members on how the budgeting process works because we have so many new enhanced funding works and all that, so stand by for those dates. And we're going to do at least two so that not everyone can make, you know, one meeting and there will be some options to join us too. The, just those who may be new to the process, you won't see a draft from our budget till probably late November, early December. Budget meetings are typically held in December into January. We have to have our budget completed. Whatever the first Tuesday matches, I don't know the date yet, I haven't looked at the calendar for, so thirty, no, no earlier than thirty days, no later than forty-five days from when the town, when the vote is, when the town is. So that's typically towards the end of January that we will have to have all budgets voted out by boards and ready to be warned. Just to give a heads up on how that's going. So there was a question last month about what we're doing to support provisional teachers. So there's a hundred and twelve licensed teachers in the M A U. There's thirteen that are currently professional licensed. In terms of supports that we offer, both at a district and building level, every, everyone is assigned a mentor and they participate in the S V S U Mentor Mentee Program, which is a year-long program. But it started with a two-day orientation in the summer, which took place prior to the start of the school year, which focused primarily on learning around behavior and social emotional learning, proficiency-based learning systems, multi-tiered systems of support, the educational support team, a curriculum and other district resources. It's a lot to put into two days, but it doesn't end there. Because they participate in the six formal S U and building-based professional learning days each year, plus the additional professional learning provided during student half-days. They participate in the teacher supervision and evaluation professional growth process, which involves a series of informal walkthroughs and two formal observations with structured feedback provided by the building administrators. They receive regular updates on the menu of free professional development and contract college courses offered, provided by the S U through partnership with Monmouth State University, the Mont higher ed collaborative, and many other institutions and providers. They receive district and building-level coaching, both academic instruction and behavior and social emotional coaching from a team of S V S U coaches. They receive guidance and support from their fellow department teachers and department head lead teachers in their discipline. The district covers the cost of their voluntary, we can't force them to this, but voluntary participation in Grow Vermont Ed Academy, which is a collaborative between the Mont N E A, the Mont Agency of Education, the Mont School Districts, the Mont Rural Education Collaborative. And the mission of this academy is to accelerate new teacher growth and their student outcomes through intentional facilitation of relevant content and support. That's from, that's a quote from the academy. And we strongly encourage our new teachers to go through that. And they receive support from the H R department and the S U in navigating the process for obtaining their professional license process. So there, again, I'll repeat that, there's thirteen M A U teachers currently on a provisional license and going through the process. And we're not, we're not giving the keys to a classroom and, you know, leaving their, their active mentor program which meets monthly and all those other feedbacks that, yeah. Is it enough? Probably never enough, right? You know, professional learning, it's not just new professional teachers because you go to, you go to the point about about math teachers, what their degree and training might be, it's got to be, it's constantly has to be ongoing for all. Not just, I don't want to target up original teachers. I don't want anybody to think that provisional teacher is some way an inferior teacher. And, but, you know, we're, it costs a lot to recruit. It's difficult to find, so retention is important to me. And the more resources we can put in place to retain staff, particularly hired positions, as you mentioned that, so I'm convinced that we're doing a lot. When I put this report together with assistance from H R, so, you know, thanks to H R Director Nick Gall for helping contribute and put together this report. And rest assured that the mentor team and our administrators are want these new teachers succeed and keep them. Any questions on that before?
Yeah, I think that's great. It sounds, it sounds like robust support, particularly around the support in navigating provisional to the regular teaching license. So it's typically what, like a two-year, two and entry-level, three-year license? It's not an easy process, so I'm curious about like, what, what do those supports look like?
Well, seriously, they meet individually with the H R director. They can request him in the H R director. He will walk them through the licenses. And we, we have assigned to us as an S U someone from the Agency of Education that we can reach out to. And now I get the, I get the provisional requests emails all the time and licenses back, so the, I'm confident the support is there for those who want it.
Thanks. And then the only other question I had was, is that provisional number of thirteen inclusive of emergency licenses? Or do we have any emergency?
I, I don't know, I'm trying to, I, I'm not aware of an emergency license, but I'm not going to tell you that we don't have.
Do you want to just for everybody in the room to clarify, because I know the difference, would you want to clarify the difference between provisional, emergency? And I just, I mean, I.
Well, provisional license is someone who's qualified for that license and is moving through the process to get it. With an emergency license, they may not meet all the qualifications for that. Like they'll have a degree, but it may not be in the subject that they're teaching in. That's, maybe in student support services would have to do that. I'm kidding, the state was during COVID, the state, actually, for special education, they still don't have. If you want to become a special education teacher, they would allow us to hire you to be one. I mean, you still have to, you have to have a degree, but then you have to do the professional learning when you're hired.
It's just as rigorous as what you said at that, yeah. I just want to make sure everyone.
I think the emergency status is only one year, right? And then there's certain requirements that you have to do to keep, you know, to be a professional teacher.
I'm not aware of them ever granting a second year on an emergency license to you. We, we, but I, I don't, I, I could be wrong, but I don't think we have anybody on an emergency license right now.
When I was at Southwest Tech, six or seven years ago, we had someone on an emergency license and that was because they were unable to fill a, a, an engineering teaching position with the salary structure that existed after that engineer. That was the one.
But then I have, I was asked to.
The student representative.
Hi, just to give a quick overview about some exciting activities going on in the next month. As on the last month at other high school. So this year we have a really great group of kids planning being senior class officers and planning some exciting events for the senior class. So on the last Friday, we had senior sunrise where all the seniors were invited to kind of watch the stuff together at the Menington Center, which was really nice, went pretty well, we had a pretty good turnout. And then this, not this Sunday, but next Sunday, the twenty-ninth, seniors are going to be able to pick their parking spots. So each senior was assigned a specific parking spot. They were required to submit design, registration, and a valid license in a form signed by parents. And this is the first year that we are painting parking spots, which is really exciting. I know, I'm really looking forward to it as a senior myself. And the school's providing some paint and students have to bring their own supplies regarding brushes and teeth. Moving on, class selections are taking place this upcoming Friday for freshman class officers, and then there are two positions opening for junior class officers. Voting is taking place during all the lunch blocks and for after school. Sports, there is actually a soccer game today against V A. And there is an upcoming boys soccer game versus Hartford on the twenty-first. And I believe that there is a volleyball game versus M M U the Saturday. So maybe anybody wants to show up, we always, you know, sports needs always love the support. In regards to theater, there are fall, used calls Beauty and the Beast, and roles are already casted. And I believe the show is currently scheduled for November eighth, ninth, and then the tenth. So really excited for that. And then homecoming is Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Cheerleaders are running homecoming, some help from the student senate. And that is after following the spirit week, which is next week from the twenty-third to the twenty-seventh. Y'all, if anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
Bringing it in for a long meeting.
Yeah. Sorry, what?
What do you mean, paint your parking space?
So basically, each student was assigned a number, so my parking space is thirty-four. And I had to submit a design of what I wanted my parking space to look like. So a lot of students do like suns or flowers, and it's just kind of a fun way for the senior class to bond and just kind of have some fun before, you know, college apps come around.
On to the high school.
I just want to say, it sounds fun. Seniors are ruthless about their spots. I get two, I've been averaging two to three seniors a day and they hold no quarter. Several teachers got tickets today because they were parked in a seniors parking spot. I told my seniors now that faculty had a meeting today and they've been warned. Don't mess with the seniors parking lot. It'll be easier to once they clean them, so. That'd be good. Just a quick reminder, open house is next Thursday, that's the twenty-sixth of September. That starts at six P M. We'll start in the auditorium. Again, I talked about the agenda, we've turned things around. We're going to do cell phone presentation first so we can have questions from the audience. Do brief introductions and then we'll be timed to do business with classrooms. Just a reminder for folks, much like seventh to eighth grade, these are not traditional family teacher meetings about individual students. But we do encourage you to connect with the teacher and make an appointment if you would like to sit and talk about training with a teacher or student with them in the future. Homecoming dance was mentioned, it is the twenty-eighth, from seven to ten, it'll be in the school cafeteria. Tickets are five dollars. Students sign a pledge. If you have a guest from another school, there's a paper for you as well. We encourage students to do all that in advance. The last day for tickets is Thursday, twenty-sixth. We do not sell tickets at the door. It's really important for families to understand as we occasionally allow a student to arrive and we have to send them away, which is disappointing. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, busy week, students, student representatives, as I already talked about, spirit week. Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, is a half-day for students, which means dismissal at the high school is eleven oh five. There is a lunch available as a grab and go option that day. Buses will be traveling the routes to get students home. I always share that so that parents, your seat, if your high school is telling you they have a half-day, they are telling the truth.
Any questions?
We're in the competition now, see if I can beat the pack. All right, am I good to go? All right, I really only have two items and one very simple reminder. So we gave our presentation on map testing, it's one of the highlight that this week. Today and yesterday, we did our first round of map testing, you know, for our fall fest. We did reading yesterday, mathematics today. Again, I don't think I'm flipping that. I have a new testing coordinator in the building, Rachel Pitt. And I just want to thank her, it's not, testing coordination is not easy work. There's a lot of, you know, you know, things to do to make sure that you have secure testing environments and make sure everybody's, you know, getting on the right test, to make sure, you know, there's directions given to staff. And, you know, there's just so many pieces to it behind the scene. And Rachel did a great job, she did it really seriously and I'm just, I'm thrilled to have her helping me with this right now. So this is thing number one. Our open house was last week. Highlighted, talked about that in the first presentation tonight, which seems like a while back. It was well-attended, you know, two hundred-plus people, you know, estimated to be there. And the thing that I wanted to say, but I knew we were running out of time, I put it in my report instead, is at the end of that presentation, we were in the cafeteria and there was a large round of applause after the presentation on personal technology and gondar bags. So I point that out because I know that we've been talking about some challenges with navigating this new implementation of this. But there seemed to be a lot of support from the middle school community that night. So that was a positive thing and that was really, I was, I was actually pretty like moved by the, the community support at that open house. And it was one of my best intended open houses, so that was cool. And then my last thing is just a little reminder, taking something out of Mr. Payne's playbook. There are, you know, we also have the half-day Wednesday, we have an eleven fifteen dismissal on Wednesday, twenty-third. That's my report for tonight.
Questions?
Just, I just wanted to say, several years ago, I think I was attending some of the awards nights and we didn't have a chance to have all this data available, but I think I asked a question at the. We saw so many science and math award being given out several years ago. And now I see the results of that, the statistics that you're showing here now. So I just wanted to infer that you can gain, if you don't have a chance to wait for the statistics, you have a ton of people that are performing and getting awards at the senior and junior award night starting at the high school.
Any committee, the policy committee, you have an ad, which I guess.
We, you were asking Jim?
No, I was asking you with policy.
Yes, the policy committee met and we have several members here. You've heard part of the things that we discussed at that meeting. So, uh, as always, we, we talked about some, uh, other complaints about personal and student nutrition wellness policy, which is one of those that were being asked to look at in terms of what we're going to do and modify. And I think when that was done, that was another policy that the, uh, industry has worked on doing at some party. School, school was out and brought it back and you had a chance to look at that and match that up to what the state was my school board and association was looking for in their model policy. And holiday is, uh, holiday observance program, policy was also looked at. And we have in, uh, one of the things that administrative rigs that were brought forth, uh, that is attendance administrative rigs and personal use of the wireless communication and the curriculum based field trip. For those things that came out of here was also addressed in the field, in the administrative rig. So there's questions and answers that you may be asking at the board is how those things are being managed. The administrators are taking the opportunity to take that policy and document those particular things so that we can have it and see those that, um, may be part of the student handbook. If you get a chance to look at the, the high school handbook along that line, things that go to the parent. There's certain policies are in there and from the middle school and the high school that goes to parents that have these things in there in terms of what the consequences are and what they supposed to be doing. So I just want to bring that. We listen, I listen to what you say around the table for things that need to be happening from a, a policy point of view. And I make sure we capture those things and then have administrators provide feedback so that we can document those things and make sure that they connect to the policy. That's it. We have a whole bunch of policies that are for future use and it takes a lot. I don't know, so I, uh, just keep going.
It's a critical part of the school board.
Yeah.
I, I believe there was an ad reading that, uh, it was yesterday and I can get the information from, so I made it for ten. Um, and I think that was a, for chairs report, we're running, uh, very long and I know we also have an executive session.
No, that's going to be canceled.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm still, we were still running long.
It was, it was, it was there as a placeholder, I should, I should write up front that we.
Thank you.
Yeah. We can pause on that.
Okay, great. Um, so a couple of things that I just wanted to touch on, uh, Jim in his report, Superintendent Colkeen in his report, um, and mentioned the budget process and timeline. Uh, it's my intent this year to have the budget process occur at the board level and not a finance committee level. Again, I think last year felt, unless by a feedback from other board members, last year felt successful. I think finance is a critical part by end of funding, making sure that we are funding our schools adequately and all members should have the information and participate. So that's my intent, uh, for this budget season. Um, I know, uh, I would like to, uh, thank everybody who came out to vote. Um, yes or no, horse finale, um, in the last special election. Um, I think we're going to put in agenda items or have a discussion at a future time. This, this meeting was not, uh, is not, uh, was too packed to have the discussion. I think we can, uh, perhaps bring, um, the director of finance and, and facilities and to kind of talk and see what our options are. Um, so I'll.
Do you want to do it at this board level? Cause that was one of the questions we, that they do have some suggested that what, actually there was going to be another amendment to this meeting set tonight, but I thought the agenda was already too full about applying for grants for lighting. And I said, let's hold off, it's too much. I didn't know if you want that to go to the finale field, right? How committee or do you want it to go?
I think we should just do it at the old level so that way the decisions.
Do that for next month's agenda.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, and then the only other thing is that I know we've had a couple of questions about, um, whether the district pays for enrollment or for registration for the board training. And Leon, did you want to talk, I know you wanted to talk quickly about the Vermont School More Association.
Yes, I did. Wanted to say that, that they have an, again, the annual conference, uh, October twenty fourth in the Polish field. There is an opportunity for board chairs to work with the superintendent at these meetings to discuss certain things in their relationship and how to be an effective board along that line. So we need to have board members attend that if you can and work through those particular things. And it's not just this particular superintendent, it's superintendents from other districts are there so that you can see and ask questions about how things have been done and so forth.
And Leon, if they email, if you go, so my, my straight assistant, she can assist them with registering and paying for the, I guess the district does pay for board members to attend if they wish to.
And there is a, uh, a, a resolution part of the meeting too, that we, those have representatives to go and vote on that. For the last couple of years, last year I was the only member there. So I voted for the career development center and the S V S U. The year before there was several of them, we split it up. So I'm hoping that I'm going to go in under the regional technical center this year. I switched, which one paid for me. And so they'll be paying, but then it, it would be nice if somebody came from Mount Anthony Board to represent that, Mount Anthony at the conference and be able to talk about changes that maybe we wanted to agree to or not in terms of the resolution.
Well, that's a little different this year, right? It's, it's Thursday night and Friday, it's, and it's a full day on Friday. We're, Thursday and half day on Friday.
So I won't speak anytime, but I, I learn something every time I go. And just saying, you, you definitely, all the questions and things that we handle and I'll bring up things here. You get to go through and learn the real process by which the Vermont School Association is asking us and find a teacher to how to manage things. Thank you.
Um, I have a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Thank you for that.